Okay, who lied?
At this point in time at seven o'clock, if all of you need to order, the location on the fireplace or doorways or either end of the hallway, case of emergency. The AED machine hangs on the wall directly across the main door. Please turn off all cell phone and pagers. Would you please take the roll call?
Norman Baz.
Here.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Here.
Ed Hay.
Here.
Carl Roth.
Here.
Jonathan Bogr.
Here.
Okay, I'll give you a minute to check the minutes of January 18th, 2022 for approval. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second, both favor Carl Roth, second by Rocky Ellsworth, to approve the minutes of January 18th, 2022, and presenting. Quickly, poll of vote.
Norman Baz.
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Aye.
Ed Hay.
Aye.
Carl Roth.
Aye.
Jonathan Bogr.
Aye.
Carry on. At this point in time, a public hearing for Michael and Rachel Black will be not held tonight. It's still open, but we'll postpone until next month due to lack of information. Is that covered? So I'll just add the motion to...
I've moved that the public hearing for Michael and Rachel Black be adjourned until next month, March 21st, 2022, after seven o'clock for lack of information needed for this hearing.
Both in favor, Eddie Hay, second by Carl Roth, to postpone a public hearing for Michael and Rachel Black, 6348 H.R. acre drive till next month due to lack of information. Quickly, poll of vote.
Norman Baz.
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Aye.
Ed Hay.
Aye.
Carl Roth.
Aye.
Jonathan Bogr.
Aye.
Carry. Okay. We'll move down to the agenda. John, Micah?
McKee. McKee.
McKee.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I tried. Did you tell the board what you're trying to do? You're applying for coastal erosion hazard area permit for a generator?
For a generator, yes.
Okay. What type or...
It's a Cummings generator. It's a maker comes out in the house, loses power.
Okay.
It's being put in by engineers and power system. Some of those generators.
Will it be installed by somebody that's committed, you know, a license?
Yes.
Install it?
Yes.
Do you believe you have to meet the height requirement?
And you have to meet the clearance from the house?
Yeah.
It has to be like five feet from the house. It can be 18 inches from the house, but only if it's five feet from any window, door opening or that. So if it's not five feet from any of those, it has to be five feet from the house. It can't be 18 inches.
Do you have those dimensions and do you can do it with those dimensions?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is there any further questions? I believe we're starting to see more of these generators being installed due to manufacturers.
Can I give you one more? Can I explain a little more about it?
Sure you can.
Sure. My wife's out. There's dialysis from home on a daily basis. So it's important that you do have power.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know.
That makes...
Because the last time it lost power in December, we had to pay up our equipment, our supplies, and go to a hotel for a couple of days. It's a long way every time.
No, I understand. They're completely... And I hate to say it, but it's probably going to get worse. Any further questions? Okay. At this point in time, ask for your motion.
I'll make a motion for John McKean, 53 or 5732 West White Beach Road, seeking a coastal erosion hazard area permit to install a generator. All paperwork is in. Letter of intent, see high application instrument survey.
Second. Both favor Carl Roth, second by Eddie Hay, to approve the coastal erosion hazard area permit for John McKean, 5732 West White Beach Road. Quickly, poll of vote.
Norman Baz.
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Aye.
Ed Hay.
Aye.
Carl Roth.
Aye.
Jonathan Bogr.
Aye.
Carry. Okay. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
So we'll see you...
March 2nd or something?
March 7th, Monday, at seven o'clock, same time here.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome, yeah.
Okay. Matt Bank subdivision?
How you guys doing?
Good, guys. All right.
I'll talk for Matt. There, that's Matt right there. My son, he's gonna be building the house over on Drake Road. We just gotta get the...
Which way did you come in?
Get the lot, you know. I got it all surveyed off and everything. We just gotta get the approval for the lot.
You're splitting that lot?
Yeah, over on Drake Road, yeah. Only one house going there and the rest, you know, we're being so far.
You're putting a house on the lawn part to south?
Yeah.
On the north side of the...
The north side?
Yeah, the north side, yeah.
No, south side.
No, it's the south side, yeah. The lot field back there. It goes to the ravine, yep.
So the flag lot will be farmed in the street?
We farm it now, yeah. Yeah, we farm it all, yeah.
Wait, so actually, it's the flag lot, the narrow area where the problem is?
Yes.
Yeah, because the other is wide enough?
Yes. He was brought up a planning board about the flag lot. Wondering if it was legal being in this flag lot also. And making sure, I think, I think it needs a 16 foot. The flag lot means at least 16 feet.
To be legal.
I think they have, I think they have 60. I don't have the plan.
Yeah, it looks like 60, right?
Yeah, 60.
Looks like 60.
60 would be the other lot, and then what do we have for?
The building side of the...
The flag lot.
Building side, cool.
If it's a 40, you'd have 100. The flag lot where it starts.
I think we have a 100. What's the setback for a subject?
35 feet.
Okay, I mean, to me, is it just me? It has to be the least variance you can grant. And it appears if you add 40 feet to that, take 40 feet off the front of this five acre lot, you'll have plenty of room and both lots will be conforming. But you need 100 feet, right?
So 40 feet going south?
See, it's not gonna be really a big deal. Because he can own it anyway, so he, you know, if he wants to go over on the other piece, you know, he wants to do another 20 foot molder or something, it's not a big deal. You know, instead of owning the whole land sooner, you know what I mean? He just wants to put a house there, you know, because it's a good place to build in. I didn't know if it mattered, you know, you're going
Well, we can make...
Going a little narrower, going into the farm field, because there's not gonna be no more building or nothing back there, you know what I mean?
Right.
We're not gonna build no more houses or nothing there. It's just a right way to get back in there. What was it on, 60 feet?
60.
Yeah, I think they all...
Is the, on the, this page here, it shows the current configuration. Will your lot, Matt, will your lot go back and cut short of this?
Oh, it doesn't go the whole length. They should have it squared up on that there.
Yeah.
Shows it on that one.
Okay, so the rest was... You could just make this one 40 foot narrower and go deeper to get you the five acres on this one. Like they're saying, if you put this over 40 feet to 100 and then just make that...
Yeah, but we don't want to screw up with the lead field and everything. We're gonna have it all perked and everything, you know?
I don't know what, I think it's just a two acre lot here, sure? This one's five acres. Does this zoning for two acres or five acres?
Oh, that would be all two acres.
Two acres, so they don't even need the five acres.
That's what I thought.
So, yeah.
One thing that, he was saying something they already have engineered with that lot for the subject.
Right, but she said you only need a 35 foot setback from the side slot lot line.
I mean, if you could, if you could make that to that 100 foot, it probably would be better. If they, if they could get the subject and everything they need in...
They would have to go back to the county.
Where was the subject going to? North of the house or...
People all turned the roadside of the house.
North side.
I'm, I have the maps down, or down here.
Oh, I see, yeah, I got it here.
See, I don't wanna really, if I start messing around with that again, then I gotta start paying an engineer and a subject, you know, the, my engineer and, you know, the subject and all that again, we're gonna have to go through all that whole phase again.
But you want to read it by, you're only gonna take two or three hours, so.
26 or 25, that's a hard...
Even if it's just, you can't be between 50 feet. Bring it to where the...
Let's get someone young like that.
It has to be some weeks.
Can you, what's, what's the width? I can't read this, man. I like...
Well, that's 204.
What's the width on here and here?
It goes 200 and...
This is 204.
204 feet between there and then it's 60 feet on from there to there.
Also, this right now is 70.
Yeah, ranch going back.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, it doesn't have side setbacks on this. That's what's...
There's 25 from the, from the garage.
Over here.
Okay, that's a five. We've been waiting that for a bad ice.
Yeah, oh, you're right.
You don't have the distance from the...
And this is a...
I think there's plenty of room to bring that one over. So there no variance would be needed.
Yeah, probably.
Because if that's 25, and you bring that over there, there should be plenty of them.
The reason you want to go five acres too, you know, in case you ever put a barn and cut a horse or something, you know?
Now, your neighbor has horses. You know, your neighbor has horses for 271.
Oh, yeah.
They got, how many acres you got there?
They don't, they don't have even five acre.
I thought you had to have five acres, have a horse, you thought?
They lease property from another neighbor.
Oh.
To have...
You can do that?
If it's contiguous, that's right, buying it.
Continuous, yeah.
contiguous.
I didn't know you could do that.
So, no, what you're saying is, Chaps gonna do this for his?
Yep, bring this, bring this line over, over here, so you have the 35 feet that you need and require, and that would be the least variance necessary.
Of course, now you get the main straight lot line.
Well, you can do a straight lot line straight up this way, and if he wants a whole five acres, he can go back a little further, because he's got more room that way.
Has planning seen this? Planning board seen this?
Yeah, but they only looked at it very quickly, just...
Okay, I just wanted...
Yeah, just sort of zoning. They have to go back to planning, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, they were concerned about the flag lot more than anything. In case emergency vehicles had to get back there. Say there's a grass fire, some kind of a fire, they wouldn't move it by themselves. I think it's 16 feet. I read, how much are they gonna take away from that?
About 60, probably.
They need, well, we're talking about the flag lot.
Yeah, so can't worry about it.
It's only, it's only gonna be a lot, it's not 16.
You're talking about 60.
It's only like...
About 100 years, they would have so back there.
Yeah.
204.
So probably you would prefer this, right? The way it is, Curtis is chopping. I'm just...
I'd prefer, you know, we would, you know, you know, better to, to have, you know, squirt out, of course, easier for everybody, you know? You know, because Matt can do anything he wants, like you're making smaller, bigger, you know, molder, plow it up and plant beans or corn or whatever, you know?
So if you just move this line, in other words, you gotta move this line 40 feet?
Well, as far over as needed, I mean, if it doesn't meet the 35, we only can go over 35 feet. That's the minimum variance required.
Well, we got more than that. We got more than 35 feet.
Or 60.
You got 60 feet.
Well, no, I'm talking about, you're asking for a 40 foot variance. If you move that line, there'll be a smaller variance. And that's part of the equation, is this the smallest variance they can grant? And I think they can get a little smaller, if we get it smaller.
And that'll be all good with the subject done and everything, right?
You got it, you got to, you got to find out what...
You know, we don't want to go spend another $10,000 on the engineering and stuff because of that. You know what I mean?
And if we can bring that to the board and say that we can't move it because it will cost that much more, that would be an exception.
That's why, you know, that's why...
But you don't have a setback here. We don't know how far away your subject is.
Everything is on the other regular engineer plans. I have a copy of them down here.
Those are the house plans.
Yeah, but it shows everything.
Okay, all right.
Everything is.
Do they have the distance from the north side of the house?
We haven't really looked at it really much, so it's not really complete yet. I'm still working with his engineer to get it complete.
Who's the engineer?
Jim Glodowski.
The reason he didn't finish it all is two months in the hospital, but Kobe Young's dead. But I talked to him again today. I talked to the lead field today up the county there and everything. Everything's all set, I want to go.
But if they give you a variance, different variance or different configurations, you're gonna have to go back to the county and talk to them. Just make sure, just to make sure. Right? Go to the county, but then it changes configuration a lot, right?
You're gonna change, that's even right. You gotta go all back.
Yes.
Expansion area and everything with the subject system. She said you gotta be 35 feet from that.
Rod will play and like to ask, or he can ask for...
That's right, he wants, that's right.
That's right.
But if the subject system is a health and safety issue, and all setbacks have to be, they can't be changed in the subject system. There's drainage.
Well, the way it's set up now, the setbacks are fine.
Well, I think 35 feet.
Knocking on what she said.
No. Well, we can, we can schedule. You have a right to ask for a public hearing.
Well, what about if I just gave Matt for us their land over there and I own the land in the back? Because I got another right way I can come in off of 18. What if I just gave Matt that squared up east right there and they're done with it, that, right? Wouldn't have to worry about nothing. You know what I mean?
You got, you kind of want to, now, Rod, where are you now?
You've got another, you've got another...
You still have to have...
Well, now, now that you go like that.
You still have to have another map with the dimensions for the lot.
Well, I just, you wonder if I just gave him this. There's a whole chunk in the front, so there's no problems at all.
But you have, but you have access to the backfield?
Yeah, I can come out the backfield, yeah.
As long as he has access, he can do that.
You mean, you're right here. Should have been this would be right here.
I guess I'm misunderstanding that.
That, that's Matt's lot.
It wouldn't really matter. I just did it like that in case if ever had to have a right of way or something, or whatever, to make it a 500 real high, you know? But, um, I just wanted to make it the easiest way possible, you know?
And then he doesn't need it, and then he doesn't need to move it off, he can stand over.
How much is...
Even if it goes up like that, makes it fight.
Without no variance, how many feet?
100.
You need 100.
100.
So that's what they're saying. If you came over here 40 more feet, narrowed his lot up by 40, if you wanted to keep it five, push it back.
But then you gotta go to square.
If you give him this, you still gotta change the map.
Well, then it'd be a lot simpler though. It'd be a lot easier. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It'd be easier for you guys to do, to say, well...
You won't need a variance.
No, we wouldn't have nothing to do with it.
Nothing to do with it. Won't need a variance at all.
You wouldn't have nothing to do with it. Make it very simple for everybody.
As long as you're not...
He's gonna be owning the land anyways, you know? When I'm ready to give it to him or whatever, you know, I'll just give it to him anyway, whatever the other 60, 70, 80, it don't matter. That's why he builds a house there, you know, so.
As long as it's not landlocked, you can do that.
I don't think it'd be easier just to do that, then, I guess. I don't know. Be easier for you guys, for everybody?
I don't make the decisions here. But now, do you want to keep the five acre lot for what reason? Just in case you want to...
No, you know how you gotta have five acres, you have a horse or a cow or something, so there's no squawking about it, you know? You got five acres, you got five acres. You make that, say, not enough, yeah.
Well, you can make five acres, deer, walkin' over. Just make a little jog there.
Well, would it be better to do that? But I just don't want to spend a whole pile more money on the engineering, you know?
Oh, to, to draw that line and bring that line back.
Yeah, it's not like they gotta move the subject or anything.
Yeah, they're not moving anything.
It's just moving the lot over 35 feet.
Move the lot about 40 feet over, closer to his house.
He's taking, he's erasing that line, putting that, putting that line in, and just going up like that.
But wouldn't that, if you go 40 feet, wouldn't that be cutting, cutting too close to the house?
That's only 35 feet.
Or move this line, move that over and just shorten that back.
Still keep the five acres, just...
You're giving him the whole drainage.
Oh, I see what you're about to do. Give him that 60 foot.
Put a line right there.
Get rid of that line. Just do that.
Yeah, just do that. Make it easier for everybody, you know? Cheryl, if everybody agrees on that, you know?
So no variance on the board?
No variance.
You just have to go to planning also for a merge?
Right.
Just split.
A split.
A split.
Because you had, they haven't split it yet, right?
And you will need a public hearing with that for it.
Yeah, it'll save you money too.
Yeah, well, that's, I'm just gonna want to try to make it as easy as possible. Like I say, you know, he's gonna have the land anyways, you know, I'll just give him the rest of it back there anyway, but I just had to, you know, so he gets approval, so he gets his house built through the spring or, I don't know, something.
So you want to go backwards then, Rod?
I think we'll just go like that, extend it over all the way to other, you know, the other line.
The 35 feet, whatever it is.
You're gonna do this, yeah. You're gonna just erase this line, put the line there, and then you have that, okay?
He didn't understand it before, though, the 35 feet.
Okay, we're not, we're, you're just gonna erase this line.
You're talking about...
Then you're gonna have your lot line over here.
Their lot line's gonna be right there, and then you're just gonna jog it up like that, and you'll have a little bit more than five acres. You'll have enough for your horses and everything, and there's no variance needed. And you got more than enough for a man.
So make it simple. That's by the easiest way to go. You know, a lot less headaches for everybody, I think. What did you say, Norman?
I ain't saying nothing. I know that area pretty well over there.
Yeah, I know. You used to walk through them woods with the big tractors.
Yeah, I worked that many years.
Yeah. With that catered to the hay in the back, he still does that way in the back there, yeah.
Who's doing it now? He passed away, right, the son?
Yeah, Matt there, the son. Matt catered, yeah, cuts it there for the house.
Okay, then, Rod, if that's what you want to do, then we're done?
That'll save a lot of headaches for everybody, and then Cheryl knows what's going on and, uh, it's simple. I'd like to make things simple, you know?
I need all the information tomorrow by noon thing.
By noon, about what now? For the other, from Glodowski?
You have to have a plan drawn up showing the erasing of the line. And they hit two lots, correct? Two lots, they're gonna split? Yeah, two tax area numbers, so I don't need a new plan.
But this one, no, but just...
It has to show...
The new lot lines. You can't just do, do...
No.
Because I don't know if I can get that done tomorrow from Glodowski, you know?
Well, if you, if you can't, then we have to go into April. It'll be the first week in April.
You can't give me a couple of days or do, no?
I really can't, because we already had a holiday yesterday, and we...
Because I didn't know I had to do this, you know?
You're gonna have to go into April anyway if you're gonna do a public hearing with us.
And if you did a public hearing with us, we'll have that April, next month, it's the same time.
It's the same time for...
All right, let me see if I can get them, and then I can just...
Is that we're not gonna get it tomorrow?
No, we got a holiday tomorrow. We got two loads of hay we got loaded out tomorrow, but I might be able to sneak up there and, um, just have them erase that one line and put it to the other one. You guys, you guys can't do that, I'm not...
No.
No, you can't. You gotta sign it.
All right. What else is that new done? Is that new anything else?
Not from this board.
Not from zoning board. Then now you'll be with planning. Go to planning board, and then after that's approved, then when you get ready to build the house, you'll have to come back to planning and do a site plan for the zoning.
All right, I guess that'll be, so what do you do it then?
It shouldn't take more than five minutes with this can.
Yeah. No, I know. I'll try to take it.
He doesn't know.
Get up in the morning there and, I don't, I don't, not a computer with.
Shouldn't take them that long at all.
You get to work early, get the hay moving for them. Run up there and take care of it.
I will go see him sometime tomorrow, though, and tell him what's going on then. All ready? All right.
Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Yeah, have a good day.
Interesting. Okay, that completes that. Maureen, anything from the legal department?
No, not, not this month.
Okay. I have a question, Maureen. Is there any, did I hear over newspaper or something where the state might be trying to take over, take away? I'll tell you one thing, they're gonna have one term that's gonna be after.
Yep, she wants to take away all the town's control of zoning and setbacks and all that, because she wants everyone to go habitate. So she wants them to be able to build whatever they can on their property so that they can go habitate.
Yeah, we'll see where that goes.
There were several letters sent from the supervisors of this area to the, to the governor.
Saw the paper, uh, the, all the mayors got together and had something that had, uh,
I did hear, let it read that she had taken it out of her plan. So now it's taken out, which she had, must have had too much controversy about it.
Uh, and it probably hasn't even heard a last of it yet either.
Yeah, I think she took out that accessory dwelling unit clause, where she wanted there to be, on every house, you could have an accessory dwelling unit without having to go to any town zoning. But she did remove that, so I think she, yeah, so I think she listened to some of the feedback.
Okay, Cheryl? Anything?
Nothing, no. We're starting to pick up a little bit, but everything's going smoothly.
Okay. Okay. Well, we only got two lovely ladies, huh? Cindy, anything?
Conservation board was getting the trees ordered for the April giveaway.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Well, thank you, Cindy. Jennifer?
Okay, a couple of quick things.
Okay, a couple of quick things, uh, we are gonna be having three upcoming public hearings. The one tomorrow is for, um, the volunteer ambulance and firefighters' tax exemptions for the local Hamlin state tax portion, or Hamlin portion of the taxes, so the county already approved that, so they will get the ten percent tax exemption on their county taxes, and now we're gonna have our public hearing tomorrow. And the fire districts have also held their public hearings, so that these volunteers could get the exemption on all of the tax items, ten percent. That's tomorrow, and then March fourteenth, we are having a public hearing for a new cell tower on, at one hundred Moscow Road, for an AT&T cell tower. Um, and then March thirtieth, we are having a public hearing for a moratorium on large-scale battery energy storage. We discussed, uh, we had our zoning workshop last week, we talked a little bit about tiny houses, we talked about trailers, and we talked about solar, I think we're gonna try to take another look at our solar law and see where we can tweak it, um, a little bit. Our assessor resigned, we are accepting applications for assessor through February twentieth. Um, there's a couple new committees in town, there's a cultural committee, if anyone's interested in joining, uh, that's gonna be for celebrations in town, and then there's a historical committee for anyone who's interested in local history, working with the historian.
Well, sounds good to me. I have one quick question about, uh, ten percent exemption, does that apply to lifelong retirement or retired, or strictly active?
So there is a little clause in there for if you served for twenty years, and you're no longer, you know, an active volunteer, you would be grandfathered in for a lifelong exemption on your house as long as it was in Hamlin.
Well, I've been in seventy, I just wondered, I don't know.
Look at that, so I would say you're in.
Is ten percent on the assessed valuation, is that, how's that work?
So, um, yes, you would get ten percent, uh, so whatever your tax amount would be, so you have your assessment, and you have your, say you pay six thousand dollars in town taxes, you would get ten percent off of that, so you'd get six hundred dollars off.
Okay.
Just like the start exemption.
Same thing with county, whatever you pay for county, you get ten percent off of that.
And fire.
And fire district, so it'll end up, I mean, it'll all end up to a good, pretty penny.
Okay, anything else?
Yep.
Well, thank you, Jennifer, that's good news.
Well, it's gonna go out here if anything happens.
Yeah.
I don't know how many years I was that, or thirty, probably, I don't know, I joined when I was sixteen.
Oh, dear lord.
You just have to get, fill out an annual application and submit it to the assessor's office, they'll like cross check, you have to get a letter from, um, the fire department stating, you know, that you qualify, and then, um, fill out the application, there's like a, an application from, um, the office of taxation that you have to fill out and hand that in, and it'll be annually you have to reapply for it.
Every year. Well, for ten percent.
Right, yeah, sure.
That's probably X dollar per hour I would make.
Yeah, make sure you're going with your lines.
Kid cash money, go to Carolina's.
I'm barring no further business, I move adjourned.
Aye, aye.
Okay, everybody.